Your Honor, a motion with one adjustment. If I may, I'd like to suggest that we move the communications item up from last to just before the closed session so that we can conduct that business and then adjourn as appropriate afterward.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadek. Any other changes? Hearing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The agenda has been approved, and now I see Reverend Tal Sullivan with us. So would you please stand for the invocation?
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to conduct business for the city and pray your blessing would reside here with all of the leaders and servants. I pray, God, that this week, as we, as many people in our community celebrate the festival Sukkot, God, that we would remember that you desire to dwell among the people. And wherever you are, God, that's where blessing is. And so, we desire blessing in Berkeley. We desire to experience the peace and the joy and the love and all that comes with your presence. And so, God, I pray special blessing over each of the leaders in this city that they will experience your presence. And pray for the time in this meeting that you'll give wisdom and direction now. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the form provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council and City Manager, Oakland County Commissioner Dave Woodward. And I wanted to come by, it looks like on your agenda you'll be dealing with a lot of water from the sky, water from the earth. A lot of water conversation, and I just wanted to bring some information that's dealing with probably one of the most, one of the largest infrastructure question that our region has to address in the last decade, that's dealing with the creation of the Great Lakes Water Authority. And I mentioned to the City Manager that who I saw a presentation with a lot of this information, I just wanted, I mean, come here for the viewers at home, as well as for all of you to have a general framework, and I'm not expecting everyone to be experts, but where to get all the additional information. From a timetable perspective, and this has been triggered in large and part because of the bankruptcy proceedings in Detroit, that the decision to move in direction, and there's some, I mean, general consensus of the creation of a water authority to figure out how do we best maintain, really, when I break down into four issues, I mean, the governance, operations, infrastructure, and rates for customers of the system, including all of those here in Berkeley. From a timeline perspective, that the authority in some form or another is happening, no matter what. That only took the triggering from the city of Detroit and one other county, Wayne, Oakland or Macomb. Wayne has already taken action, and so that the authority is there. The question left outstanding is whether Oakland and Macomb become joiners. If we don't become joiners, the governor will appoint someone from the respective area to be part of the authority, and all of the rules and structures of the authority continue. If we do become part of the authority, we in essence secure our seat as part of the deliberation and part of the governing structure on how we contend and deal with this incredible asset. Just to take the scale, I mean, the operating budget of this water authority is larger than virtually any of the government agencies that are helping create it, the city and the respective counties. And it's something also to note that without water, we all lose occupancy to our homes. And it's conditional. So it's, and we should be proud that we actually do have some of the highest quality water there is in the country, and as scarcity of fresh water, I mean, becomes such, it becomes even more valuable as time goes on. All the information, everything I'm talking about, everything I'm presenting, and Oakland County is scheduled to decide whether to join this authority this coming Wednesday, Wednesday evening, and can be observed online or, I mean, attended the meeting in Pontiac. But I wanted to take a moment here just to zero in on kind of like three, maybe four key points, and see if there are any questions or any of you that you have. I know you're not supposed to engage me at this point, but find me afterwards, but most importantly, so that residents, because this is such a radical shift of what we had. This authority is for 40 years. In essence, it will live forever. And the reason for that is because any outstanding, I mean, the system operates on bonding to be able to pay for the infrastructure and the operations of it. As long as there's a bond out there, the authority will always exist. There's no way for all the bonds to expire exactly on the same day 40 years from now. So in essence, we are talking about a governing structure that will exist forever. The appointment to this board, and I've actually raised some questions and concerns, given the authority to govern operation and rates and all these other types of things, that how do we hold this board accountable? It is an appointment of one person, and it's so essential that this person will have, be part of a body that requires supermajority for some things, simple majority for other things, everything when it comes to rates, capital improvements, purchasing policy, a whole host of things to operate the system. That I'm a strong believer in democracy, and unlike other types of authorities that have often functioned as a pass-through of cash, so we know the DIA and the Zoo Authorities, those capture tax revenue that was generated and passed on to the operating entities of those things. We are talking about something that will literally oversee general operations, the selection of a executive director, and set all the outstanding policy that's really critical to a system that has, I mean, underfunded for many, many years, the general infrastructure that's necessary, what's often referred to as is common to all. We've got to get the water from the source to us, as well as setting rates and all, I mean, and the maintenance, and the creation of something that I think is actually very positive, the water RAP funds. Actually, I want to make a point here, I know you're going to be hearing from Water Resources Commissioner Jim Nash, who's been very instrumental in helping shape the framework of this. For the first time, there actually will be a fund to actually help those who are in a position that to not be able to afford water without undermining the entire system in which 0.5% of the wholesale rates will be dedicated, a projection in the beginning of $4.5 million, available to the entire region. Now, how those funds get dispensed and how they get operated well, the authority will ultimately decide that, which again comes back to the accountability. And between now and Wednesday night, I will continue to raise up the questions and concerns. I think some models are in place. Macomb County is in the direction of nomination and appointment of the county executive, approval by the respective county commission. Wayne County, I believe, has also adopted a similar standard, hoping to get some comparable level of greater accountability to whoever this person is. Because we're talking about someone who's going to oversee a budget larger than any of these individual governments that are creating this, and have tremendous input, I mean, supermajority status to yea or nay to move things forward, and we need to make sure that there's accountability, and more importantly, the access for the public, as well as those who are much closer to the issue, like everyone, I mean, around this table here, of dealing with infrastructure needs, held accountable to make sure we advance the interests and concerns that we have. So, without going into too much greater detail, I guess, I mean, all the information about the creation of the Great Lakes Water Authority is actually on the Oakland County website. If you go to oakgov.com, it's right there in the head of the banner, a tremendous amount of resources that compares to the system that we have today versus the system that we would have should, well, the authority is being created one way or another. The question is whether or not Oakland County at this juncture will be a part of it, as well as the information, the Articles of Incorporation, which is really the act that we're taking action on, and the Memorandum of Understanding of, which is captured in a lot of those things, but also our requirements that have to be put in place before the authority can actually be put in, to move forward. All in all, the city will keep the asset, the ownership of the system, it will be, in the next 200 days, a lease will be negotiated, and then all those, I mean, all the framework in terms of operations, executive director, policies around how RAP funds are done, contracts moving forward, all of those things will be, I mean, decided by this appointed body. All existing contracts will be maintained, all labor contracts that are in place will be maintained, and eventually we will move in a direction in which the wholesale suburban customers will be funded in one system, I mean, and oversaw by this authority, and then the city will maintain operation for its customer side, similar to how we maintain infrastructure for our respective cities. So, it's a lot of information, it is a massive undertaking that's happened, it's a tremendous amount of work, and like I said, I want to, my hat goes off to Commissioner Jim Nash and the entire team, a lot of the folks from Oakland County have been played a role in helping shape this. I think there's a lot of positive things. I will continue to raise the need for greater accountability on who gets appointed, to make certain that not only are the interests of the entire county and region pushed and advanced, but to make sure that there is an access point for the public to be able to hold someone who's going to have a tremendous amount of power accountable day to day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will, as is our custom here, waive the issue of not having questions, since you're an elected official representing the people of the city of Berkeley. So, council members, if you have any question for our county commissioner, now's your time.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for being here and for providing us with that information. Now, quick timing questions, you mentioned something about Wednesday, so it sounds like, you know, Wednesday's just a couple of days from now. Can you shed a little bit more light on the timeline going forward?
The timeline, well, it's been rather fast. That the, what ultimately produced this, there, I mean, there involved federal gag orders and negotiations, and a lot of things that led up to this, to a few weeks ago, actually the reveal, the revelation of the plan, to convene, I know the City Manager attended a unveiling of what, I mean, the nuts and bolts of what is in here, as well, the timeline that individuals have, individual jurisdictions have undertaken to actually deliberate and understand this more. October 10th is the deadline that was given to us by the judge, and so we are quickly racing towards that through all the appropriate processes. Wednesday night is when the Oakland County Board of Commissioners is convening our next meeting, and it is on deck to be decided whether or not we formally join. And like I said, by formally join doesn't mean, if we don't join, the authority will exist because of what I mentioned, that the city of Detroit and Wayne County have already adopted it. The question is, to what degree do we want a say in who is appointed? And I would go a step further about how that appointment actually happens, and so I will continue to press that point, but that is ultimately the decision at this juncture. Do we join? If we join, okay. What is, I mean, what are the provisions to make sure that we, I mean, appoint someone who's appropriately held accountable?
Thank you.
Protam Terbrack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming, Mr. Commissioner. When there are things like this that happen with the county and the governments and the people around this table, and the City Manager certainly have a little more information, but for the, you know, the average resident that hears all this happening, the biggest question, and for me as a resident too, how is this going to directly impact me, assuming for our discussion here that we do join the authority? What impact would the residents see, if at all? Would they see price changes? Would it go up? Do we not? I mean, I know there are a lot of variables here, but if you could, and I know that's a pretty open-ended question, but...
I'll be very brief on that. I mean, so, I mean, a lot of this comes down to cost. What is this going to cost me? And then, and Berkeley and a lot, number of communities here are part of SACWA, and we purchase our, we're a customer collectively as part of SACWA, part, I mean, we purchase water from the city of Detroit, the water system. And then that money comes into our respective communities, and then we have our jurisdictional additional fees to maintain the infrastructure that takes it from the main pipes to our individual homes. Part of this deal, part of the memorandum of understanding that's part of this, is that rates will be fixed at 4%, I believe over the next 10 years?
Maximum.
Maximum, maximum 4% increase, the wholesale rate. That doesn't, that's not the additional fee for, I mean, for your water bill that a local jurisdiction would put on there to maintain the central pipes in the respective jurisdiction. So, that's guaranteed, no more than a 4% hike in the wholesale rate. And then, and I believe from the SACWA rates, that's, it's a little lower than I think the last increase that we would have received. And that's very important, and to maintain affordable, high-quality water, absolutely essential. But I would stress even further, probably the most important thing is that we maintain this infrastructure. We have infrastructure that dates back to the Civil War, wooden pipes pushing water through, and the system has largely underfunded the infrastructure that's necessary to keep a caliber of water up. And so the hope is, and part of, I mean, one of the, I think, very positive things, is a $50 million commitment of resources being captured from the water system that will go into the infrastructure of the common to all assets, and make certain that we're upgrading that, I mean, that needed infrastructure. That breaks, we don't get water. There's a lot, there's actually been some preliminary analysis of volumes and volumes of water, we know that's pumping out, we measure that, and we measure the water on the intake of when you turn your sink on. There is a significant loss of water between the point we pump it out and pull it out of a sink, out of a faucet. And that suggests that water's leaking all throughout the system, and you would think that anything that dates back to the 1800s, that's probably not a big shocking surprise. And so, another key point, I mean, having additional resources to really upgrade that infrastructure is key, and that will happen under this authority. And then lastly, which I think is really important, I mean, just, I mean, coming off the Great Recession, we know that there are a number of people who are struggling just to make ends meet, creating a dedicated fund to help low-income or those who struggle to pay their water bills without compromising the entire system. And so, that initial fund that estimates of $4.5 million, available to support the entire system, is, I think, a positive benefit, without jeopardizing the integrity of the overall operation.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now you have to explain it to me. No, I'm just kidding. But all the, I mean, all this information is available on the county website. I think there's a lot of great resources, a comparison between what exists now, what will be, as well as a lot of other frequently asked questions. And now a day goes by, someone doesn't ask me whether I'm taking my daughter to school, and people want to talk about water. And, I mean, it is happy on a fast track, pretty much mandated under the bankruptcy proceedings, and we have a decision to make whether we get in. I believe that the positives clearly outweigh the benefits, I will continue, I mean, the negatives, but I will continue to raise the point, the accountability of this person who, I mean, once appointed and serves a term, who are they accountable to after that point? And without an appropriate public deliberation and vetting of their qualifications, which there is a standard quali, I mean, higher qualifications that are required under, not necessarily the old system, but of the current system, but the previous system, I still think that it's essential to bestow this amount of power into an appointed individual, again overseeing a, I believe, a billion-dollar operating budget, not to mention the capital outlay of, again, our most precious resource that we have to offer, so.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come before the council? Seeing none, then, we move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular 35th City Council meeting on Monday, September 15th, 2014. Ordinance number 0514, matter of approving the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Finance, Division 2 Purchases, Contracts and Sales of the Berkeley City Code to modify the city's purchasing procedures and regulations.
Is it a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Kadek. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we move along to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions and presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two?
Resolution number R3514, matter of designating Saturday, December 6th, 2014, for the annual holiday parade and tree lighting ceremony in Berkeley.
Is it a motion to approve R3514?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar with support by Councilmember Kadek. Ms. DeSessa.
Council, this comes to you on an annual basis. You know, let me, let me go back and start again. It's been a while since I've been here. So let me say, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you all for joining us, to residents and to visitors to our meeting. Thank you for joining us this evening. Now, going back to this item, Your Honor. This is something that appears before you on a regular basis, on an annual basis, and our holiday lights parade is an amazing event that happens in our city. I believe we do have a, an individual that is the co-chair of this item, and so I am not going to take any of her, any of her powers. So, Ms. Cinda Coon will be here in just a second, and she'll give us some details. So, Cinda, if you don't mind, come on by, and let's hear about this fantastic parade. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to invite all of the council and city manager to come and participate in the annual holiday lights parade, and to walk with us, and light yourselves up. It is on Saturday, December the 6th. We are, of course, encouraging all of the businesses downtown to get involved, have sales that day, just get everybody out. I know that our chamber is, we're going to have a trolley that's going to be running all day long. We will have horse-drawn carriages in the evening after the parade, and we encourage all of our residents along here to light up the streets and everything. It's always really, really pretty. And then we always order a little bit of snow that evening, so it just makes it perfect. And that's it.
Any questions for Cinda?
Thank you, just a comment, I'd like to thank you and your committee for the wonderful work that you do. I know there's a lot of planning and a lot of hard work, and I've helped work on Santa Slay, so I know how much work it is. There's a group of people that are really out there helping, and our thanks go out to all of those people.
Yeah, it is absolutely a wonderful event, great community event, great family night.
And we're looking for members all the time, so come on out and help us.
Very good.
So, yes, and to invite you also to the annual tree lighting ceremony, which also takes place that evening, and that's the Berkeley changing hats, Berkeley Junior Women's Club, to invite you to...
Now, I have an important question.
Yes.
Is Santa Claus coming?
Santa Claus is coming. Uh-oh. He always comes.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure, because there's a lot of people have a vested interest in Santa's arrival.
Absolutely.
Very good. Great news.
Very important.
We got a letter from Santa, and he is setting that time aside, and, you know, he's putting his elves in charge, and so he'll be, he will be here.
Beautiful.
Right.
Well, thank you very much for ensuring that and guaranteeing that. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R3514?
Kadek?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Presentation from Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner James Nash with regard to an overview of the GWK retention treatment facility and the August 11th, 2014 wet weather event.
Thank you. Water Commissioner?
Thank you for having me.
You're very welcome to our city.
Well, I appreciate the invitation, and anytime I need, you need me to be here, I will be here. I am here with Gary Nigro, who is in charge of the detention basins in my office, and he's going to go over the George WK, kind of the history of it, how it works, and what happened on August 11th. So, after that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and if you have any more questions about the water authority, I can answer them too. So, I'll let Gary have it.
Thank you.
Can we turn off the lights a little, please? Maybe one or two.
Good evening. I'm going to take a few moments today and try to go through a little bit of how the system works and the whole drainage system for the entire 12 towns you've heard it called before, maybe in the past, or the George W. Coon Drainage District. Let's see it right away. I guess I just sort of said that here, but I'll start, I'll go through the actual layout and function of the system, and sort of describe, describe to you how, in particular, even the drains through Berkeley work, and then I'll talk about the actual wet weather event that engineer talked, and then I'll talk about what we're, what we're doing to go forward from there. We'll start off here with, well, the colors don't come in very good. Interesting, you can see it on the monitor there. Anyway, what you have here, this is a slide of the southeast Michigan, this out here being Lake Saint Clair, this right here being the southeast corner of Oakland County. So, more particularly, this line, this jagged line that goes down through here is the district boundary for the George W. Coon Retention Treatment Facility. Next slide here. Okay, I threw this slide in here just to kind of get you guys oriented and show you sort of where you're at. So these are all the communities that are tributary to, to the GWK facility. There's 14 communities there, and you can see there's certain portions of Troy, Birmingham there, Beverly Hills and Southfield, that share a drainage district line with the Evergreen Farmington District, which is tributary to the Rouge River. This entire district here that you're currently in is all flows towards the Clinton River. Sorry, there's more color in the actual slide here. I put this on here just to sort of give you an idea of the, the network of pipe that runs through the entire southeast district here. This right here, 12 Mile and Stevenson Highway, is the headworks of the George W. Coon Retreat, Retention Treatment Facility. From there, there's networks of large diameter combined drains running all through all these communities here. Again, this is southeast Oakland County, it's kind of cropped off right there, so this up here would be Troy, so right, right about there, your little wedge piece shape there, there's Berkeley. You can see on this too that all these, all these lines that run through here represent, for the most part, very large diameter storm drains. As many of you are probably aware, Berkeley has their own set of combined drains running up and down every street through neighborhoods, backyards, and they all eventually outlet into one of the large combined drains that are operated by the Water Resource Commissioner's office. In this case here, in Berkeley, you can see a couple of different color lines here, these yellow ones kind of running all back, they all head to this location right here, so. And I know I'm a little dry, I can't help it, I'm an engineer, so I, if you guys have any questions at any moment, then I, are you an engineer too? I got a thumbs up. Excellent. So, and I appreciate questions, if any moment if somebody wants to interrupt me, but I've heard questions from other meetings we've gone to that people say, why, why do you take all the water to this point right here, eventually running down the Red Run Drain? It's just the geography of the land. I mean, the ground in the entire area naturally slopes that direction. So, before development, and before there was houses and businesses and this whole area 300 years ago, if a drop of water fell anywhere in here, this is where it was headed to, right here, eventually down the Red Run Drain. I should back up a little bit, I skipped that one. Oops. Let me give you a little better overview here. So, the outlet of the facility right here, this is the Retention Treatment Facility right here, and the outlet is the Red Run Drain, which is Chapter 21 inter-county drain, runs about 8.5 miles all the way down to the confluence with the Clinton River, right here. I'm sorry, right there. And it handles, it picks up the flow from this entire area and a lot, a major portion of Macomb County also. This, this here, you know, it's a, this is a combined drain system, okay? So what that means is that your storm water and your sanitary sewage both use the same, the same pipe. Designed all to flow for storm events of a certain design size under dry weather conditions, which would be like a day like today, it's not raining out. All that flow, the flow, the sanitary flow that's going through those combined drains is all intercepted by sanitary interceptor sewers. So like this one right here, this is the same location here, Twelve Mile and, and Stevenson Highway. And it flows through one of these two large interceptors, like this red one down to here, or this Dequender Interceptor down, this is Dequender Road, down to this point where it outlets to the city of Detroit's wastewater treatment plant. Well, conveyed through a series of Detroit's pipes at that point, but eventually, all the way down to Detroit Sewage Treatment Facility to be properly treated under wet weather condition, and, and it can normally handle the flow. At any given day, there's probably about fifty cubic feet per second of flow flowing through these sanitary interceptors to that point on its way down to Detroit. During a wet weather event, so you have a storm event, this, these pipes here can only handle so much flow. We have a contract capacity with the city of Detroit at two hundred and sixty CFS, cubic feet per second. Anything in addition to that makes its way into the George W. Coon Retention Treatment Basin here, and eventually on its way out to the Red Run Drain. I was back in this slide now, so you can kind of see all this whole network of all these large storm, storm drain. And by large, I mean, some of them are, you could easily drive a, a bus through. Twelve, thirteen feet wide and ten, twelve feet tall. Some of them are multiple boxes, all right next to each other. Going to the next one here. Again, just for orientation, this is Twelve Mile Road, Twelve and Campbell right there. There's Twelve and Stevenson. And this is our facility right there. So here's more specifically Berkeley, and, and here, back in the nineteen twenties to nineteen forties, there was some, a large drain built through Berkeley. It's called the Royal Oak Branch. It's the, actually the Hubbard Branch of the Royal Oak Drain, and it runs down through here, makes its way across, across the city of Berkeley, and picks up most all of your storm drainage, at least it did back then. At some point in the nineteen fifties, there was, development was, was going like gangbusters. You know, World War II was over, everyone was building houses, and it got to the point where there was a lot of flooding. There was so much impervious area being created in, not just Berkeley, but all of southeast Oakland County and Macomb County and Wayne, that there was very frequent flooding, and this being a combined system meant sewage backing up into people's basements, often, maybe, maybe weekly or monthly anyway. So the state, the DEQ basically made a threat to southeast Oakland County and the surrounding communities, saying that we're going to disapprove any future sewers being built until you get a handle on this to create a safe sanitary conditions for all the residents. So at the time, the twelve communities in southeast Oakland County got together, and they petitioned the, at the time, Drain Commissioner's Office to create the twelve towns drainage district. So, so that's what they did, and in the early sixties, they built a series of large relief drains. So like, for instance, this, I'm getting ahead of my own slides. So this first one here kind of shows some of the flow arrows. This was the original drains, all heading down to, up to the, they flowed towards the George W. Coon Retention Treatment Facility, up towards Twelve and, and Campbell. In nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-one, they built the twelve towns relief drains, picked up a couple more large diameter sewers, or built some more, all flow towards the same facility. This did a very good job of relieving much of the flooding. As a matter of fact, I'm going to share a little story real quick here. So in two thousand and eleven, there was a really isolated kind of freak storm that happened, and it, and it flooded basements in Berkeley, I think all right down in this area, right, right about down in here. At the time, there was, it was, it was very, it was very isolated, but we had a, we had a consultant do a little research and, and pull the historic rainfall data to try to, try to figure out, you know, how hard did it really rain? And, and at one point, there was, there was some news clips that he found on the internet, and it was from a local reporter, and there was some guys out in the street, this old timer was, was out in the street going, telling some other people, it used to be a lot worse before they built the twelve towns drains back in the sixty's. And I was like, oh, yes, all right, there's somebody saying, okay, something's going right, so. So, so the twelve towns was built and has been, for the most part, doing a very good job for, for decades. For any of you who are unaware of, of the retention treatment basin and what that actually is, it's a pollution control facility that all the combined drains flow toward. And again, here's I seventy-five and Twelve Mile Road to be at the bottom of the slide here. Starts right there. It's a basin that runs underground all the way up, crosses under John R., goes under seventy-five, under John R., under Thirteen Mile, and it outlets at Dequender Road just north of Thirteen Mile. It's about two point one miles long. It's about sixty-six feet wide and about twenty-five feet tall, and it, it stores about a hundred and twenty-four million gallons. And just to get you oriented, a lot of people, if they're not familiar, or, because it was built back in nineteen seventy-one, so if, unless you're, unless you're older, you would have never realized that this was once a huge open drain, because today it is the Red Oaks Youth Soccer Facility, the Red Oaks Golf Course, the Red Oaks Water Park in Wave Pool, and the Red Oaks Dog Park. So we entered into, you know, agreements with Oakland County Parks and Rec to build all these recreational facilities on top of the actual structure, the basin, so. If any of you have ever golfed or played at one of those facilities, you were over the top of it. As I mentioned earlier, the contract capacity for those sanitary interceptors down to Detroit is two hundred and sixty cubic feet per second, which is a pretty significant flow rate, but nothing compared to the amount of flow that the actual drainage district can see coming through it during a significant rain event. So the actual retention treatment basin is designed to pass up to sixty-seven hundred cubic feet per second through the facility. And as I mentioned earlier, it is a, it's a pollution control facility. So what, what it actually does is it, it screens, it skims, it, it disinfects using basically concentrated bleach. And if we can't capture a storm, a larger storm, smaller ones we can capture completely and then pump down to Detroit after the storm subsides. Larger storms pass straight through our facility, over the top of weir walls that, but they're, as I mentioned, screened, disinfected, all to the MDEQ's permit requirements until they eventually discharge the Red Run Drain. Any questions yet?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Could you provide secondary treatment also, or just primary treatment?
Just primary there.
Primary, okay, not secondary. Very good. Thank you.
So here's some more engineer talk. So the facility, like I said, was first built in nineteen seventy-one. It was designed to fully capture a one-year, one-hour storm event, all right? And treat and pass through a ten-year, one-hour design event, all right? So that's the, the ten-year storm is that one that approaches sixty-seven hundred cubic feet per second of flow, so. Anything, what did I say here? Anything in, in addition to that, you know, ends up being cleaned, disinfected before it passes in the Red Run Drain. I have here, I got to walk up here. This is a little short video that was put together a few years ago about the facility. You know, one thing I didn't ask about is sound.
Oops.
Well, maybe I'll be skipping that then. Yeah.
And you make this any louder by any chance?
The microphone by it?
Probably won't help. We do have speakers, and we asked about that. Oh, well. Maybe we just go to volume, increase the volume. Increase the volume? Oh, well, that's okay.
Well, that's the screening room. That's one of the screenings.
This is one of these large bar screens that I mentioned. There's about sixteen fine screens in the facility. That there is the screening room floor. It's probably about three or four hundred feet across wide. This is John Stange. He was a operator, a supervisor of the basin that just, just retired last December. I'm going to do my best to lip sync for him here. So this is the control room. We, we control the entire facility from here. There's, there's, we can open and close facilities, turn the screens on. Most of the facility is fully automated, but from there, he can monitor other retention treatment basins across town. He can monitor levels and sewers at certain points.
I have a question. You know, one of the many concerns I get from residents is that when we had this, you know, this event, this flood event, many people felt that perhaps y'all had maybe closed the gate somewhere along the line, and so therefore the water went back and, and so caused all, all the flooding. Can you address that question, please? Is there anything that y'all did to close the, the doors or anything like that?
Sure, and I've, I've...
You've heard that question before?
I've heard that question several times now, and from, from a lot of people, a lot of different places, actually. So the entire facility is, is all based on gravity. It has a series of weir walls in there. There are no, there are no gates that we actually close, and we quite literally cannot stop the flow. There's, there's nothing that we can do to stop the flow from coming through, so. I guess the best, the best way I can describe it is, as I mentioned a little earlier, the, the system has a outlet to Detroit for sanitary dry weather flow at two hundred and sixty CFS. And then the basin itself, like I said, all the flow heads that direction, because that's just the natural topography of the land, wants it to do that. Anything, anything more than, than the sanitary interceptors can intercept starts to fill the basin up. So the way I can describe that, I guess, is, is to say, picture the system almost like a bathtub at home, all right? So you have your drain on the bottom, the outlet, would be that drain down to Detroit. And then the top rim of the bathtub itself would be the top of a weir wall. And say, it would overflow into the Red Run Drain, like it would overflow on your bathroom floor. So if you got the, you got your shower on, kind of light all the drain, all the water that goes down the, into the tub can make its way down the drain just fine. If you had a hundred showerheads all pouring into the shower at the same time, you'd be putting more water in than that drain could handle. So eventually, the tub would fill up, and eventually it would spill over the side of the tub. That is quite literally exactly how the system works. Only our bathtub holds a hundred and twenty-four million gallons, and it's screened and disinfected, and, and... Is that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions about how the facility operates at all, or? I left, I leave a lot of details out. I, originally, the presentation was put together for a bunch of other engineers and takes about two hours, so I'm, I'm skipping a lot of things, but I'm trying to...
Council, if any of you would like to come to, you know, with me to go see the facility, I know we've done that in the past with a few of you. I know that they, they've always been very open to that, so please, we'd be more than happy to set another meeting. We can go. Thank you.
That's true. We've had open houses in the past for all the communities in the area, and I'm sure that, that Mr. Nash would be more than happy to host another, another one. It's, it doesn't do any justice, the videos, and it's, it's quite impressive to, to look at, so. All right, so now I'm going to talk about the actual rain event that particular day. So our operators are always watching the weather. So somebody is on call, you know, there's, there's people there in the facility for a normal, you know, forty-hour work week, maintaining things, making sure everything works. But then when rain is coming, they're on call twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and they're, they watch it very closely. They kind of lose a lot of sleep over it, actually, so. As a matter of fact, the guy who retired, he was like fifty-six years old, and I'm like, where are you going, John? You come, you've got a long career ahead of you. And he's like, oh, no, man. I'm like, every time it rains, I get nervous, and I go like, oh, dang it, I got to run into work tonight, and so. So there was rainfall predicted for that day, August eleventh, and I think the, all the major forecasts were predicting about point three, point four inches of rain. We got, we got over five and a half inches of rain in that area. No one, no one saw this coming at all. We have a series of rain gauges around the county. The one in particular that's located actually at the facility, at Twelve Mile and John R. area, recorded a, a six-hour rainfall of about five and a half inches, equated to about a three hundred and thirty-year rain event. So you heard me earlier talking about what the basin was designed for and what it was permitted and designed for by the state. One year, one hour, full capture. A ten-year, one-hour storm, we can pass through and treat effectively. This was a three hundred and thirty-year, six-hour storm. So this was quite literally beyond any storm that this area has ever experienced, as far as any historical... I'm still, yeah, I agree. Trust me, I agree. So as I mentioned, the design criteria of the basin was greatly exceeded, so. I will say, however, though, that we actually did pass all of our NPDES permit requirements for, for killing fecal bacteria and treatment procedures, so. Despite, despite the fact that that event was larger than any we've ever seen, we were actually able to, to effectively, you know, at least to the permit standards of the state, treat the discharge. So I put this slide back in here. I hope the next one has color, just to kind of give you an orientation again. So there's Berkeley right there. There we go. So this is the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's, basically the weather service. This is a historical rainfall for the area. Again, here's Berkeley right here. And just so you know, they're typically a little bit conservative on, on these things. So for instance, you see over here, the color coding here, seven to eight inches of rain. There's areas at Oak Park down here that actually hit that red area, and most of these numbers are typically actually a little low. Kind of overlaid some, they're hard to see here, but kind of overlaid some of the actual rain gauges we have. You can see one there, 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 there. This is the one at the facility itself, five point five two inches of rain. And you can kind of see too that it was, it didn't hit everywhere. So this is up in Bloomfield, Bloomfield Hills area. If I'm reading that right, I think it says point seven four inches of rain. So we quite literally got nailed right down in this area, southeast Oakland County, Macomb and Wayne. I live in West Bloomfield myself, and I, I always go in like, yeah, it's raining. What's going on, you know? And then you see the news the next day and go, oh, my gosh. What this chart is trying to show is, this is the actual rainfall during that day. So you see the time at the bottom. Here's ten AM to, I think that's nine thirty PM. So it started raining around ten, ten thirty, and what these bars represent, each bar represents fifteen minutes of rainfall, the scale being in inches over here. Started raining a little earlier, got a little bit, not too bad. Around three o'clock, started getting some more significant rain. Around five thirty, started coming down very heavy. You can see at this moment right around five forty-five, point seven inches of rain in fifteen minutes. That's the, that's the intensity the rain was coming down at, so. The, the red bars here would represent the, the ten-year, one-hour event that the facility was designed for. As you can see, it was, it was exceeded. That's not to mention all this rain over here that would have been already stored in the, in the system, in all the large drains and the, and the basin itself. This is just kind of another way to show the same thing. This is the actual cumulative rainfall. So as, again, as you can see, it started raining a little earlier today. Rained point three, point four inches of rain. We're going, yep, that's what, that's what the weatherman forecasted. We can handle this. Right around between three and seven, over a four-hour period, we went from about a half an inch of rain to five and a half inches of rain, so five inches... to five and a half inches of rain. So five inches really in a three-to-four-hour period. This is the actual kind of timeline here, so, as I mentioned here. We started taking the flow into the facility around three PM, meaning the system was becoming inundated with water. The large drains were full. There was, there was as much going to Detroit as it could. Around five-twenty-five, we have some relief screens that activate, that actually allow it, the there's four core screens. Most of the screens in the facility are half-inch screens. There's four two-inch-wide bar screens also that there's, there's points in the system, levels that are watched, and when the levels start getting high enough, additional, additional gates activate and allow the flow to go through even faster. Around six-forty-three, the facility operator level flooded. Now, this is something that's never happened before. Was not designed for that. At any given moment, most rain events, even large rain events, you can stand on the floor of the screen facility and look down to the water about fifteen feet. During this rain event, water came all the way up onto the floor, about three feet above it, covering the handrails. We had a couple vehicles submerged in a, that were in a, until recently, what we thought a very safe area to park them. Around eight o'clock, the rainfall ended. Around ten-forty-seven, the water receded from the facility operator level floor, that facility I was mentioning. Around two-thirty AM, the relief screens deactivated. I'm gonna point out the ten, the ten-forty time. Some of the other meetings I've been to, the community asked questions like, they said, around ten o'clock, everything just seemed to just go away really quickly, you know, and they were implying that that's when we opened a gate or opened a valve and let the water go, and we were holding it back until that point. But, as you can see, about two hours after the rainfall ended is when all of a sudden, everything receded very quickly, so. That is actually, to me, an indication of all the drains working properly and doing their job very well. Soon as the rain stops, everything drains away quickly. That's how it's supposed to happen, but again, if it's coming down that fast and that hard, it just can't get out of the system. It can't, it literally has no room, no place to go. We kept taking water in the facility until, oh, I'm sorry, we were discharging the Red Run until one-forty-five on Wednesday, almost twenty-four hours later, and then we were actually taking inflow into the basin until eleven-fifty PM on Wednesday evening. That's about forty-eight hours there. As I mentioned earlier, the contract capacity Detroit is two-hundred-and-sixty CFS, and we we usually normally don't, can't even approach that. During this event, we reached three-hundred-and-twenty CFS. There's a mag meter down that eight-mile road that records flow, so we know we greatly exceeded what's ever come out that pipe before. And the facility itself, as I mentioned, designed for sixty-seven-hundred cubic feet to pass through the basin itself and into the Red Run, a treat. We saw a flow of around nine-thousand cubic feet a second. We discharged approximately two billion gallons to the Red Run over the course of two days. And the Red Run Drain itself was in a backwater condition, meaning that normally, when the when the facility starts to spill over the top of the last weir wall, if its basin's full, it drops maybe twelve feet down into the Red Run Drain where it's, then continues on its way to the Clinton River. In this case, the Red Run Drain was actually about five, eight feet higher than the actual outlet was. So it took a while to calculate, because we don't, it's normally based on a height over the weir wall, and that was didn't count. Couldn't use the old formulas, so. And the Army Corps of Engineers, they actually recognizing the historical significance of this event, actually came out, contacted us and said, "Hey, we'd like to do a study on the Red Run" and go and find high water marks along the entire Red Run Drain and do a little report and study, so. That they've promised to give me a copy when they're done. For future flood insurance rate maps, things of that nature, basically studied it themselves on their own. And some of the, some of the actual numbers they were coming up with were that the levels reached about two feet higher than the current five-hundred-year floodplain event. The facility itself, our facility took, took damage, similar to all the houses and stuff in your community, I'm sure. We had electrical panels submerged. This, again, is on a level that has never seen water, nor should it ever have. We had, we had water come up in a lot of, a lot of places, as I mentioned, structural components were still evaluating. Elevators were submerged. I mentioned, we lost two pickup trucks, so.
Gary, was there ever a time when you thought maybe there was any danger to the employees at the facility when all this was happening?
Yeah, probably. So, hopefully, that these guys are smart enough to know not to go down into these areas, but, you know, we have actually a lot of very good employees that work for us, and they're very, they're very concerned about doing a good job. I actually was there most of the night myself, so. My own personal part of it. So I'm at home about seven o'clock that night, and I was at Costco, actually, with the family, and the supervisor calls me up and says, "Hey, I think you need to come down here." I says, "What's going on?" He's like, "Facility's flooding." He says, "Armageddon. I quit. I'm going home." He did not quit. But I'm going, "What are you talking about? The facility's flooding. That's, that's can't happen, right?" And it's, again, out where I was living, it's like, "Yeah, we got some rain, you know? Okay. Nothing abnormal." So, so I jumped in my truck and I drove down there, and I kind of got the joke, and took me about two hours to go the last one mile, by the way. So I'm sure he experienced the same thing, as the roads were completely flooded, but. Yeah, he himself stood in the facility, looking at the water coming up, going, going, "Wow, my gosh, this is amazing. This is amazing. I can't believe this has happened," and then eventually went, "Oh, this isn't funny anymore. How high is this gonna get?" So there was definitely at one point a concern for, for safety, but it didn't get so high as to actually inundate control room and things like that, so. But during the event, actually, there was, there was pieces that were of our facility that were breaking, and our operators were running around trying to fix them as they went, you know, and prevent further damage to the facility, you know, things of that nature, so. It's, it was, there was an element of danger, but we had no injuries or anything like that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, with question?
Sure.
You mentioned that if someone had seen it coming, that no one saw it coming, that, you know, based on what the radio said or the news or the weather said, this was unexpected.
Right.
Would it have made a difference if someone had seen it coming?
Not for this storm, no. No.
And then, one more. You said that Detroit, we have a contract capacity with how much water they will accept. Was anything shut off in Detroit, or?
No, no. And as a matter of fact, our flow meters recorded, when I mentioned some of those flows, three-hundred-and-thirty CFS during the entire event. They were going like gangbusters, so. Yeah, that's, you know, and most of the, our contract capacity says two-hundred-and-sixty CFS. Under normal circumstances, we're not gonna be able to push more than that through the pipe anyway. When everything has thirty feet of water pushing down on it, because in an event this size, you can jam more through it, but again, that's, it's never happened before, so. I just had a couple photographs. So this is actually the, one of the chlorine pump room in our facility, and I put this one in here just to show probably a similar description of what people in your community would have experienced. This is a floor drain. And that is, that is a combined sewage erupting out of it as our facility was flooding, so. Our guys were experiencing the same thing. We were able to actually plug that off before it reached these motors, because then all of these would have been compromised, but they were, they were saved, so. By the acts of our operators, I guess, like, I'm normally used to working in sewage, so it doesn't scare them too bad, so. So they were able to go and plug that in the middle of it while that was going on, so. This is just about a thirty-second video that I took, and it, there's no, you don't need to hear sound anyway, except for me going, "Oh, my gosh." This is that control room floor, or that screen room floor, so that's all twenty of the screens.
Oh, my God.
You can see those are handrails. It never is supposed to get that high. That's all the water flowing, filling that facility and flowing out, out through the structure, so. That's, that's what I saw when I got down there around nine o'clock, and went, "Oh, my gosh." These are some photographs of the Red Run Drain, so. This is the outlet at Dequinder. I put these in here, because you can see Dequinder Road in the background, see the cars back here, you know? So, these were taken the next day. And any given day, the water's actually even quite a bit lower than that. This is probably up about five, six feet here still, but the water got so high, so that handrail right there is the same as that handrail. And you can see a car in the background. The water was over Dequinder Road, so it was maybe ten feet above that, that handrail. This is the Red Run Drain at Mount and Van Dyke. Same, same things happened. You can see debris up here in the guardrails. The Red Run Drain over, you know, went over all of those roads all the way down. And then going forward, basically, we're, we're in the process of collecting as much data as we can from communities. I know that Berkeley has provided us with some information already that we hired a consulting firm to evaluate this storm event, and, you know, I'm an engineer, but then there's modeling engineers that are actually a whole lot even dorkier than me. And they are, they are excited about something like this, an event, because they're going, "Oh, my gosh, you have any idea how much we can learn from this event?" They're like, "No one's ever experienced anything like this." This is like, you know, the guys, it really was, you know, and there's guys, there's guys working for us that are my age, like in their upper thirties, and they're going, "I'm gonna be able to tell my grandkids one day. I lived through this storm." It's like, they're like, because it's, this is a significant, significant rain event, so. But we're compiling all that data right now and going through that, and it's, at some point here, I would imagine that we'd be able to report our findings back to all the communities in the drainage district. And at this point, as I mentioned, you know, I, I don't know, and this is probably a question, I don't know that there's a lot we could have done, but, at the very least, you know, weather, weather patterns are changing, and we've had more and more heavy rain events. I know that two thousand and eleven was a very wet year. Berkeley had a little bit of flooding from that kind of a freak rainstorm. Twelve was very dry. Thirteen was, I think, the wettest season ever on record, and then fourteen has been almost just as wet with some major significant single events, so. I don't know, aside from global warming or whatever you personally believe, but weather patterns are changing, and, and that's, I don't know what to tell you about that. But I think, I think, unless you have any questions for me, I'll
I do have one. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Since we exceeded our CFS, our contract capacity, are we facing any penalties from Detroit?
If we are, they have not mentioned anything like that to us.
Okay.
Just, just because Detroit basically experienced the same thing as us and went, "Hey." All bets were off during that rainstorm. There was nothing you could have done, and so.
Very good. Thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other? Yeah, there's a question in the audience. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
You can answer.
I'm curious. Does rain event spread over four, five hours, whatever it's thing, if we had about six inches of rain? If we had an event that lasted one hour with two inches of rain, can the system handle it?
Yes. Yes, it has many times. We've had, as I mentioned, over the last few years, we've had a lot of very significant rain events that our facility has always been able to handle without any trouble. We normally can even handle, and I mentioned it was designed for
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Yeah.
I mentioned it was designed for a ten-year, one-hour event and permitted that way through the state. It's, I don't want to say routinely, but has routinely handled storms much larger than that successfully without any problems, so. We just hadn't seen one this large before.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's any other questions, anything I can answer?
Then perhaps we should turn on the light then, if we don't need slides.
Just last Friday, I did my Second Annual Stormwater Summit. I had a attendee at it. I just found out from your BBW. Discussing really these very issues. I had the first one last year in October, and I had the second one this year. I'm planning on another one next year. We had Valerie Brader, who's a special assistant to the governor there. I pigeonholed her on the way out and got her to set up an appointment with me, and I'm gonna try to bring at least a couple, the three major watershed groups were the ones that deal with this the most, so. We're gonna kind of pitch to them the idea of helping to create, helping to allow local communities to create stormwater utilities. They're basically impossible to create in this state, unfortunately. Most states have them. Wisconsin, one of our speakers, they have just in, around their major cities, actually, not Madison, but Milwaukee, they have ten in the local communities just around them, which allowed them to help create the large five-county drainage system that they now have that really uses a lot of green infrastructure to control these water issues without the huge expense of building giant tunnels and, you know, the gray infrastructure that's been the tradition around here. By allowing local communities to create a stormwater utility, actually, Ann Arbor's the only one that I know exists in the state, what a utility allows you to do is charge the communities, businesses and homeowners a fee for the amount of water that comes off their properties. Water comes off a property when you have impervious surfaces, roofs, driveways, parking lots. Anything that water can't soak into sheds water when it rains. If you are allowed to do that, if you can set up a stormwater utility that would charge a home which really doesn't produce a whole lot of rain, because you just have a roof and a driveway, generally speaking. But if you then, what you would allow is mitigation of those costs. If a homeowner were to put in a couple of rain barrels and a rain garden to stop water from coming from their land, then their stormwater utility fee would just disappear. They wouldn't have to pay it anymore. So over time, you would, property owners would, as with an economic stimulus, would, would build these systems to to keep stormwater on their property, and then they would no longer have to pay that stormwater utility fee. In the meantime, we could use those funds to build the things we need to build to control for storms in the future. These works, and this is what Milwaukee is doing. Last year's speaker was from Philadelphia. Philadelphia's been working on this for a couple of years now. They have very, very strong plans that even like a community like yours here is, we are the most built-up part of the county right here, in this, this part of towns, this part of the county, so. We have upwards of eighty, eighty-five percent of the land area in this part of the county is impervious surfaces, so. Whatever lands here immediately goes to the storm drains and then is taken out, and that's what we cause floods. Briefly mentioned, global warming, global climate change, the modeling shows more and stronger storms are gonna be happening in the future, and this is gonna be building up over time. The state climatologist was on a show with me recently on a press conference, and he was talking specifically about this. My speaker at the First Stormwater Summit mentioned the same issue. That over time, we're gonna getting, we're gonna be getting more storms like this, and we have to start preparing ourselves. You know, you could do, and other counties, Macomb County, some people in Macomb County are saying Oakland County should separate our system. Great, let's separate our system. It's only like three or four billion dollars to do that, and, you know, I don't think we have that kind of money here. We built the George W. Coon to support the ten-year, ten-one-hour storm. That's the, the state guidelines you have to build to. You could feasibly build a system that could have taken this storm. But again, it would have cost three or four billion dollars, and for these twelve communities, there's no way we could have afforded that. You just can't afford to do that. By allowing stormy utilities and/or any other way you can encourage communities to, to keep water on their property, you can eventually, over time, stop, stop these larger storms, and it would take a much larger storm even than this to have this kind of effect on us. So, if we can start working in that direction, I would be willing to help any community that wants to help do that. We were approached by Bill Creel, who heads up the DEQ Water Resources Division a few months ago, that he wants to come and talk to the twelve-town communities and see what they can do to help a few months ago, that he wants to come and talk to the twelve-town communities and see what they can do to help, uh, maybe potentially bringing in grants or other things that they can help us, uh, start to really come to terms with this long-term. I think that would be a very good thing. I'm planning on, uh, kind of reorganizing and re, re, uh, generating the, um, twelve towns, uh, system oversight board that we had created during the building of the George W. Kuhn. Kind of fell away because we've just been operating it and everything's been going well, but we're, we're planning on kind of re, re-upping that and making you guys, and having you guys see if you'd be willing to, uh, participate in that and we could start working towards answers on these things. Um, if you go to Lawrence Tech University over at, uh, Southfield, Ten Mile and, uh, Evergreen, um, they put in systems in their, uh, student services building that they put in a twenty-thousand-gallon cistern underneath their quad. So, all the stormwater that comes off the roofs goes to that and they can use it for irrigation. So, if, if you had a stormwater utility, not only would they say be, not have to pay a stormwater fee anymore, but they'd have twenty thousand gallons of stormwater to use for irrigation whenever they needed it, so you'd have basically free water. So, there's a real economic payback for that. Um, we have to start planning long-term for this, because we are gonna be seeing storms like this as more common. Um, so I think we need to be doing that and that my office is here to help in any way it can and, uh, we're planning on going up and talking to the governor's office, uh, soon to see if we can start the, the ball moving in that direction. So, if there's any other questions I can help you with, let me know.
Councilmember Baker.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and, and thank you and your staff and team for the excellent analysis and, and insights into what happened. Clearly, there was something that, uh, you said nobody had really expected and if, and, and great question, if, if, even if we did know about it, I don't know what we could have done differently. Uh, you, you piqued my interest on the stormwater utility thing, um, from the municipal perspective, the kinds of things that we could do. I don't know if I have the number exactly right, how many miles of street we actually have. I don't know if it's fifty-four miles, something like that, somehow. That's a lot of surface for water to just gather on and just try to move along. Uh, are there some, can you give us examples of some creative ideas that, um, communities with, with a lot of, um, streets and sidewalks like we have can do to try to divert or harvest, uh, some of that water? Any, any thoughts?
Um, Ann Arbor, uh, actually, I would, I would go to, um, SEMCOG. SEMCOG did a book, uh, the, the Michigan State, uh, LID manual, Low-Impact Development Manual. It's a really amazingly good, uh, analysis of a whole bunch of green infrastructure, a whole bunch of, um, low-impact development strategies at, uh, different facilities, different communities they've used. They have just page after page of, of best practices and specific projects that they talk about. Um, really, really good resource. I'd contact SEMCOG. They're a very good resource on that. Um, I can tell you that Lansing, um, and I can never remember the street, the street just below the street that goes in front of the Capitol, it's Washington, maybe? Washington. They have a really good example there. Um, there's almost no runoff from that street. They have, they have, uh, right along the street, they have, uh, bio swales, which is, um, traditionally you have a curb and then a little lump of grass with a few trees on it and then another curb in parking lots, along straight streets. But instead of that, instead of going up, you go down, so the water goes, fills that up and then drains through that, so it never reaches the stormwater, the storm sewer. Um, there's just a tremendous number of things. You can do that on residential streets. Um, you can do it, you can do green roofs. There's just a, a tremendous number and really, a lot of them are very low-cost and low-maintenance over time, so there's, there's a lot of potential for that and, and SEMCOG is an excellent resource for that.
Uh, thank you for that. I, uh, what strikes my, um, thought process here is, is, um, leveraging opportunities to do these kinds of incremental and innovative, um, approaches. One of the projects that I know a lot of folks here in Berkeley are looking forward to is, is the work that'll be happening on Coolidge North at Twelve Mile and I wonder if, as we think about this, I mean, we will be tearing up the road to do stuff. If there's any opportunity we could think about to, at least to help experiment or try some of these kinds of ideas, any water that we could divert, uh, would help, you know, and so we have this project coming. Uh, like you said, I'd be curious to see maybe if, if your office and, and our folks could at least, uh, partner with SEMCOG.
We can absolutely talk to you about that and again, we bring in SEMCOG. They're very good about that. They're very good at helping, you know, get grants too, so.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a very quick one. I want to thank you for the engineer speak. I enjoy hearing that every once in a while. Some of the stuff gets kind of boring, you know, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilmember Kadakle?
Mr. Commissioner, I, uh, want to thank you and your staff for the communication you've had during this whole process. I had the opportunity to attend a meeting on September eleventh and I saw some of these pictures back then and even seeing them again, it's, it's pretty unbelievable. But I, I think the open communication or I speak with our director, Mr. Schuler, he's right on top of things because of your office and, uh, it's great. We appreciate it.
Anytime I can help, you never hesitate to give me, give me a call. I'm here to help you and I'll send anybody that I can get help with, so.
Thank you. Miss, uh, Mr. Sessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to formally thank, uh, Commissioner Nash and, and Mr. Nigro as well for his work. Very good. Did good. Appreciate the presentation. You know, I, I asked, uh, the commissioner when we were at that meeting that councilman, uh, was talking about, uh, I asked the commissioner if he would come to, uh, to speak to our, to our city council. And, uh, right away, he, he was here, as, as you can see, so I appreciate that.
Anytime.
But, uh, but he's been to other communities as well and he's given more or less a similar type of presentation. But as you can see, we still have a lot to do. This is something that we're gonna have to plan. Um, the, uh, the Director of Public Works and I, as soon as this is, we're waiting for a little bit of time to, to just, uh, allow us to catch up on some of these other things, but we are looking at, at some of these ways as to how we can, we can perhaps, uh, prevent and, and educate as well, let the public know what happened, because when, when, when this event occurred, it was a surprise to everyone and no one ever imagined that something like this would happen. And so I know many of the residents were, were very concerned that, that the system was, wasn't working. But as you can see, uh, this was a very unusual, unusual event. Historical. Thank you.
You know, I wanted to say one more thing. Um, as we develop this regional water authority, I think we have a real, um, opportunity to do more regional planning than we've really ever done in the past. Um, I, I've been, again, I, my office and myself have been involved with this process right, right from the very beginning. And I was first approached in, in March of last year by the city with this basically the same deal that we were accepting now. And ever since that started, um, my office and, uh, Macomb and Wayne and, and the DWSD itself have, have had a level of cooperation that really has never existed in the past. I can tell you, you know, I was on the county board of commissioners for eight years before this office and we've had serious fights. I mean, they, they, they took money out of the system for a radio system and, um, when we discovered it, we sued them and got the money back, but, um, we have always had an issue with, uh, basically an opaque, um, organization that we were dealing with. And one of the major functions of this authority is gonna be absolute transparency. We're gonna have as much transparency as we can. Every meeting will be immediately on the web. Um, we're gonna do the same thing the county does with, um, our, all our financial work will be, you know, open to the public. And again, that was another major thing we had an issue with over time. Um, so I think we have an opportunity here to, to collaborate in a way we haven't did before and we can do things, uh, regional planning that we've never been able to do before and we'll have a, we'll have a, more of a voice than we ever had, so. I think this is a real step in the right direction and it's well timed because this has become, uh, a very, um, active issue now because, you know, planners have been talking about it for a long time, but nothing like experience to show you, you know, how bad things can be, so. We have, we have a fire under us right now and I'm trying to make sure that the state understands that and we take advantage of that in Lansing, so. Anything I can do to help, I'm here for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Sessa.
One more question. Um, Mr. Nigro, is there any way that I can get a copy of this perhaps, so I can, uh, I want to make sure that it shows properly on our, on our website and it really would help. It's right there?
It's loaded on that computer and your IT person took a copy of it also.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Jim, for coming and Gary. Uh, we appreciate, uh, the important information that you shared with us and the residents. The people of our city and region have, uh, suffered a great deal, uh, in the past, uh, couple of months with the gap to this event. And, uh, it is certainly correct to say that we can't build another drain for several billion dollars. I mean, that's not a viable option. But there are creative solutions like those that you enumerated and I'm, I'm excited to hear of those because they give us an opportunity to do something meaningful that is, um, both in accord with, uh, protecting the environment and keeping our basements dry. And, and, and a final note, uh, for Gary, he may or may not know this, but those of us who have a few years under our belt will know that George Kuhn is a former cha-, uh, mayor of the city of Berkeley.
You didn't know that?
If I remember correctly, or the stories from, from some of the guys around our office who've been there for a while, George, during all that flooding back in the fifties and early sixties, it was George Kuhn, one of the ones who actually, mayor of Berkeley, who actually launched the effort to create the ten, or the twelve-town's drainage district and alleviate all that flooding and then naturally just went, I think I want to be the drain commissioner now, so. He was our drain commissioner for many, many years. I think twenty-four years, twenty-eight years.
That's right.
Yeah, so.
So, thank you guys for being here.
If you don't mind, I was gonna mention one other thing too, that, uh, there was, have you guys been disseminating, you know, the FEMA information to your residents? Okay, I was gonna mention that, that, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Boucher, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda.
Motion number M sixty-nine fourteen, matter of casting Berkeley's official vote for the following to serve as Board of Directors for the MML liability and property pool, directing the city clerk to send in the marked ballot, vote for three directors, terms beginning January first, two thousand and fifteen.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-nine fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadakle. Mr. Sessa.
Mr. Mayor of City Council, this is an item that comes before you on an annual basis. The three candidates we're asking for your consideration, uh, they include Mr. Jason Epler. He is the city manager for the city of Ionia. Sue Osborne, she's the mayor of the city of Fenton, and Mr. David Post, he's the village manager for the village of Hellman. Uh, council, we ask that you consider these individuals, uh, to be, uh, to be members of this board.
Very good. Any discussion on these, uh, candidates? Hearing none, Ms. Boucher, please call the roll on M sixty-nine fourteen.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakle?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M seventy-fourteen, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between Smart and the city of Berkeley for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen municipal credit and community credit funds in order to provide public transportation services for the period of July first, two thousand and fourteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Council, again, this is annual contract that appears before you for your consideration. Uh, the city attorney has reviewed this contract and we are recommending it for your consideration. I've asked, uh, the deputy director of Parks and Recreation, Mr., Ms. Teresa McCarleton, to please give us a brief overview of this, uh, of this project.
Good evening, council, mayor, council, city manager. Uh, as the city manager said, you see this contract every year come before you. This year, there's a slight increase in the community credits. Um, that money comes down from the federal to the state and is dispersed to the, um, counties and then comes to the cities. It'll help offset some of the additional costs that we have for this year. Um, nothing too much to report beyond that. Um, ridership remains about stable. Um, these services are really important to a lot of our residents and just, uh, two things to note. One, we have a dri-, uh, we had a new driver as of last year. He just celebrated a one-year anniversary and he's been great and all of the residents absolutely love him, so that's worked out really well. And then two, a number of our residents were featured in Smart commercials this year. They had called and said, do you have, you know, people you think would be great for this? And I said, yes, absolutely. It ended up working out and, um, if you catch a Smart commercial and see a couple of them, those are some of our residents, so that was pretty, that was pretty great, so, um, that's pretty much it.
Teresa, do we provide the driver or do they provide the driver?
We provide the drivers. We have three drivers. They work part-time for us and two of them have been with us for a very long time. They do a phenomenal job for us and then, like I said, the one, uh, was hired, uh, he's been here a year as of October third.
Thanks. Any other questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
I just, uh, thank you, Your Honor. Would you provide for people viewing, uh, overview of what the program does and who they provide transportation to?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So, the program, we have three Smart vehicles. We have, uh, van service that runs and basically that runs whether it's an individual that needs a ride to a doctor's office or a ride to an appointment, any, wherever that may be. We have our locations run between Eight Mile and Sixteen Mile and then Loser and Dequinder. And they can, they set up an appointment. We ask for usually a two-day. They call, schedule transportation. We also have scheduled services for our bus and for our van that will take people to grocery shopping on specific days and things like that. It's for senior citizens that live within the city of Berkeley or anybody who is disabled of any age. Um, and, uh, you know, it's really any type of service that they may need, um, we provide the transportation for that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Teresa? Seeing none, thank you, Teresa.
Thanks.
Uh, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M seventy-fourteen?
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M, M seventy-one fourteen, matter of approving the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen winter maintenance agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the city of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-one fourteen?
Move to approve M seventy-one fourteen.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Kadakle with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Council, this is an annual contract that appears before you. I've asked our Director of Public Works, Mr. Derek Schuler, to come by and explain exactly how this works. By the way, Mr. Mayor of City Council, uh, our city attorney has also reviewed this agreement and he is recommending it for your consideration. Mr. Schuler.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, this is a, an agreement that we've been through a few times, well over ten years. This is a winter maintenance agreement, so, uh, Twelve Mile Road is under the jurisdiction of the Road Commission of Oakland County and not the city of Berkeley. Uh, some time ago, uh, the leadership of the city decided it was in their best interests to maintain that road, plow it and salt it, because we can provide a higher level of service, uh, than the Road Commission for this particular road. It's one of our main routes. It's one of the first hit, so it gets done, uh, quickly. So, the Road Commission reimburses us, uh, yearly for, uh, our maintenance and it's been a flat amount for several straight years now. It hasn't really moved at all, so, uh, the amount that you see is the same, nine thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, eighty cents is what they will be reimbursing us for, uh, this upcoming winter maintenance season. And, you know, if we have a winter like last winter, it's certainly fair to say that this does not account for all of our expenses, but this is the uh, formula that they've used and, uh, certainly we're not gonna turn it away. Um, as far as installments go, there's two installments, thirty-five percent in December, sixty-five percent in March. Uh, I handle those requests, working closely with the finance department to make sure that, that we get our funds. That's really about it. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions? Straightforward enough? Thank you, Derek.
You're welcome.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M seventy-one fourteen?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please, uh, read item number seven?
Motion number M seventy-two fourteen, matter of awarding the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen pavement maintenance program to Spray Patch Road Repair Incorporated of Madison Heights, Michigan at a unit cost of three hundred and thirty-five dollars per ton, not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. In addition, authorize twelve thousand dollars to Hubble, Roth and Clark, HRC, for construction engineering services.
Is there a motion to approve M seventy-two fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support by Councilmember Kadakle. Mr. Sessa.
Council, as you all know, you know, this is a very important project for the city of Berkeley. You know, we, uh, we do our best to make sure that our streets are maintained as, as best as we can and I'd like to acknowledge the, the, the hard work that both our Director of Public Works and our engineers, Hubble, Roth and Clark, have, have done in order to make sure that the recommendation we are, uh, asking you to consider this evening is the best that we can possibly bring to you. I know they've done a tremendous amount of work. Uh, but with that, I'd like to ask our Director of Public Works again to come up and explain how this, uh, how this has come about and how this program will, will work. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you. So, the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen pavement maintenance program, uh, is, is a little different than past programs, so we're always looking to evaluate where we're at and what we want to do. Um, in the past, we have done, uh, a lot of, uh, overbanding crack sealing of our roads and, and it's something that we're gonna continue to do, but we tried out Spray Patch last year and, uh, really liked what we saw. It was a pavement repair that ended up staying in the hole, uh, quite a bit longer than Cold Patch, which is, everybody knows what Cold Patch is. Uh, Spray Patch is a, is a hot emulsion with stone, uh, that, that really, uh, binds to the pavement, uh, because it, it, the nature of it is it, it seals the entire area, so it really prevents water from getting down underneath that pavement and that's not something that Cold Patch can do, so it really stays in the hole longer, which means we don't have to keep going out as often. So, for this year's pavement maintenance program, I work closely with our engineers and I propose to use, uh, our entire program and really focus on Spray Patch. There's plenty to Spray Patch. We did some work last year. It was more of a test case and it really held up well, even with the harsh winter that we had, which took a beating on the roads. It really held up well. And so, I would like to really focus on this year doing all Spray Patch on numerous major and local streets as well as our public alleys. We started the public alleys last year. I want to continue those and finish those public alleys and as well as several major and local streets. So, we put together this bid and, and had a, had a bid opening. We had three contractors submit bids and you can see from your documents the prices that came in. The low bidder Spray Patch Road Repair at three thirty-five a ton was the low bidder and that was the contractor that actually did the work last year as a sub to a different prime that had, that was a low bidder on our contract. So, I'm familiar with the work. I was out on site with them while they worked. They do, they have a very clean operation and I was excited to see that they were the low bidder for, for this year's project and looking forward to getting started soon. Relative to schedule, our hope is to do a wave of Spray Patch work here before the season turns and then come back in the, in the springtime and do another wave prior to June thirtieth. So, my thought here is two waves of Spray Patch, a little bit before the wintertime and then another wave after the winter months. This product can be put down really in any weather, although I'm, I'm more inclined to put it down when the conditions are right and we can probably get the best longevity if we do that. They'll tell you you can put it down in freezing temps, but I'm, I'm looking to put this stuff down above forty and, you know, get a good, clean surface for this stuff to bind to. I think that's about it. Again, there is some money in here for construction engineering services, although I do not intend on probably utilizing all that amount. Our office may do a little bit of the inspection. I know last year I did some of the inspection when the crews were out and so I'm looking to probably do a little bit of, of both, but I'm certainly looking for their assistance as well.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tim Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You just mentioned the additional for HRC to, to do some, some work as well, some engineering services. One of those things in, in, in HRC's letter mentioned the pasing, updating, the, the pazer ratings for the city of Berkeley. It's something that, you know, we, we've talked about a little more probably frequently now with some things that we're talking about than in the past. Can you just quickly kind of explain a little bit what that is and when we are looking at having this updated?
Sure. And part of the reason why I, I would like to save on the twelve thousand is to account for help, having them assist us with that pazer raking. So, I asked HRC to include that in their proposal so that I could get a price from them. We haven't authorized them to do any of that work, but the pazer rating is the road rating of our city streets and it's a, a quantitative means of rating the streets, a number scale that, that you can apply to every street. And so, HRC performed this la, last rating for us, I believe a couple of years ago, Jane, if my memory is right. And I would like to re-rate the city streets after the, after this winter and see where we're at. Again, it's a quantitative, it's a number. It puts every street on a scale from, from poor to good and helps us understand, you know, where, where are the roads that, that need the most help and, and will allow us to move forward with, you know, potentially looking at a, a road bond or another measure to try, try to improve our roads, you know, a more significant project. Again, this pavement maintenance program i, is not road reconstruction, it's not road resurfacing. It's addressing those smaller repair areas to the best of our ability, but it, it helps keep things intact. It is a Band-Aid, but it will give us a few years when it is put down properly.
And it's a Band-Aid that would improve, you know, the pazer rating of, of roads if there weren't, you know, weren't, or no patches at all on them and they were just holes and, and falling apart.
Yep.
We would, you know, much more consistently be down in the forty, fifty, sixty range, I'm assuming, with those roads. But, but with the work that, you know, we can do with these patches, you know, it brings them up to a certainly usable rating. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I noticed that there's quite a discrepancy in the cost per ton between our bidders. Do you have any idea why the high bidder is almost twice what the low bidder is? And it seems, that seems unusual to me because it's the aggregate, the embolshing and the spray thing, it's not very complicated.
And it's the exact same equipment. The, the only thing I can think of, Councilman, I don't know exactly the answer to that, but my only sense is, is that they may have had work programmed in place already for the season and their crews are tied up and, and so this price is reflective of that. At a significantly higher price, they'd be more than willing to come into town, but it may be a work-related issue that, more than anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick follow-up question in terms of the timing. I appreciate the couple of waves, the one yet this year and then another one in the spring. For any given patch or any given section, what is the average, like outage or downtime that a, that a neighborhood or a resident may experience? Do we measure that in hours or days or weeks?
Great question, great question. The beauty of this is it's, it's taking traffic essentially immediately afterwards. So, after they spray it, they put down a coating of stone and that's what helps bridge that gap and allow it to take traffic. You don't have, you know, the tire-to-emulsion contact because you've got a stone interface in between, which allows you to pretty much be right on top of it right away. So, it, it's a, you're, you're following within minutes.
Right. Great, thank you.
Very good. Well, I suppose we don't need a pazer rating to know about the problem of Coolidge North of Twelve. Is it fair to say that we are on target for springtime, having that redone?
Yes, we are. The Coolidge resurfacing project, actually, design plans are over eighty percent complete right now. We have a, a GI meeting scheduled for a couple of weeks. That's basically MDOT's meeting to make sure that everything on the plans is what they want to see. Keep in mind, federal funds are involved, so we've got to make them happy with regard to schedule. But yes, everything's on track for springtime construction on Coolidge North of Twelve. And we look forward to, I think the bid opening is scheduled, we'll be going out to bid over the winter months, which is a great time to bid. And I believe the bid opening is sometime in early February and then construction to follow.
Very good. Thanks, Derek. Mr. Sessa.
Just a quick question. Derek, you know, I know we just had Commissioner Nash talk a little bit about some of the, some of the things he could potentially do to help us during floods. Is it, is it too late for us to take a look at that, given the fact that we're at eighty percent now?
Great question and it, it probably is. And it's important to point out that, that Coolidge is a resurfacing project. I would view the type of things like porous pavement, for instance, those are more appropriate when you're doing a full-depth reconstruction. We are, with, with Coolidge North of Twelve, per the approval of funding, it's a, it's a mill and overlay, so we're milling out a few inches and putting back a few inches. It really limits what we can do with respect to the, the hard surface, being able to have flow go down. But it, it certainly doesn't hurt to ask the question and I certainly will follow up on that, both with MDOT and our engineers, to say, hey, is there anything else that we can do with Coolidge, knowing what's happened? I will say this, Coolidge does have its own designated storm lines, which is unique. As we all know, we have a combined system in Berkeley, but the actual drain lines for the road on Coolidge are, are strictly designated storm. They don't have the combined nature. Obviously, as they flow down, they become combined at some point, but that's an important differential as well. But I am, I will certainly raise the green infrastructure to see if there's anything else that we can do on Coolidge.
Thanks. Very good. Councilmember Edgar?
And consider other streets throughout the neighborhood as well.
Oh, sure, absolutely. We have to think about this every time. In my mind, every reconstruction project that we take on, I think we've got to be thinking about that. As we all know, we've got the restricted covers on our catch basins. That's something that we do to hold water in the streets and that's for a purpose of trying to moderate that flow into our system. So, that is a measure. We'll be looking to, as we move through the Saw Grant, get a better idea of how many structures are, have the restricted covers. We'll be able to plan, maybe add some more, depending on what's in the field. So, the Saw Grant, I think, will also help us with some of these measures.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. You mentioned porous pavement. I don't know if any of our people listening understand what that is, but porous pavement, in my opinion, has come a long way in the last, I'd say, five years even. It, it used to be something that was put in to drain water through the road, but it also deteriorated the road faster. The new systems now, I think, are much better and that's something we can look at in the future, to wick water right down through the pavement. You've got to have this special subbase and all of the layers have to be just right to take the water down through that. And the engineering on that and the development of that has improved vastly in the last five years.
Yeah, the key with the porous pavement is you've got to have the right soils underneath. And unfortunately for Berkeley, you know what we have here is a lot of clays. And, and so you really have to engineer systems that are, that are much deeper to be able to handle that infiltration. So, that's the, that's the one important piece, but we need to think about it and we need to figure out the financial end of it, make sure we're considering all of our options.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schuler. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M seventy-two fourteen?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting and Councilmember Edgar is up first.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Councilmember Kadakel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, the Public Safety Department did an outstanding job last week with the Fire Prevention Open House and I want to thank them. There were a lot of people there. It's a little cooler, but everyone was having a, a great time. Want to remind everyone, next Monday is Columbus Day and the offices will be closed, the offices, no?
No, we're open.
You're open? Okay. All right, I thought we were closed, my mistake. Anyhow, it is Columbus Day. It's actually October twelfth, but we're celebrating it on Monday, October thirteenth. And finally, next Monday also, raising funds in a legend, in legendary ways for the Friends of Berkeley Public Library on Monday, October thirteenth, from nine to PM, five PM to nine PM. This is only valid at the Baggage Daves on Coolidge. If you go in there, there's a flyer. If you go in there, they will donate fifteen percent to the Friends of Berkeley Public Library. Fifteen percent of all pre-tax food sales. So, if you get a chance, go grab a burger and help the library. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tim Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item this evening. One of our younger residents in the city is taken upon himself. He's joined a group and he is a cancer survivor and he is, works with the group Kids Kicking Cancer. His name is Daniel Richmond and he is hosting a garage sale in the community, in the city of Berkeley, I should say. And this garage sale's on October twenty-fifth. It'll be at our community center as well. Okay, the Berkeley Community Center Craft Show, October twenty-fifth, from nine AM to three PM. And there's a website that you can go to, kidskickingcancer.org. Learn more about the organization that Daniel's involved in. You can email justdoitzero six nine six at yahoo dot com to find out more information. Basically, what we're looking for, what Daniel is, is hoping for, anybody who has any crafts or anything that they maybe want to donate to this, to this organization. What the organization does here is they provide weekly classes for children, both inpatient and outpatient, in mind-body techniques found in martial arts to try to ease the pain of very sick children while empowering them to heal physically, spiritually and emotionally. Again, the, these are, this is a support group for kids that either have cancer or are cancer survivors. I want to make sure that, that we, we get this out. You know, he's, like I said, he's a young, young resident here who has gone through a, a very difficult situation and he's come out stronger on the other end. He's trying to help others, other kids who are also going through very, very difficult situations. So, again, that's October twenty-fifth, from nine AM to three PM. Daniel's charity garage sale and that is at the Berkeley Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. That's, that's awesome. I love that. Hi, everybody. A couple of quick things. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, the board meets again this week's Wednesday. They meet every month and topics will continue to include like their goals and objectives for the upcoming year and the, and planning horizons in, in the future. A lot of projects take a lot of time to really get off the ground and so I appreciate the fact that they have these conversations now, including Coolidge Highway, streetscaping and some placemaking opportunities along Robina, on north side, south side of Twelve Mile, those kind of things. So, that's, those are great dialogues. There was a, there's a conference called the Meeting of the Minds, which is an annual event. It moves from city to city year after year and this year it was hosted in Detroit. I had an opportunity to attend and, and I spoke in a segment there and the main theme was around smart cities and having the notions of innovation and the smart cities initiatives that they can use to, to help the municipalities operate more effectively, interact with their, their residents, businesses and neighboring communities more effectively and really help spark creativity in the kinds of things that they do. And both of these themes, with our DDA and then also this Meeting of the Minds kind of thing, are really optimistic opportunities for us to, to express what's important to us as a city, as a community, as, as people, residents and, and families and things and the kinds of ways in which this, this body, the municipal government can help move that stuff forward. The Michigan Municipal League just came out with their second book. They've, this is on the notion of placemaking. So, again, placemaking is this concept of creating a space or an environment, an atmosphere where folks really want to be there. It's just something, you know, I can't wait to get there. I'm excited about it and you want to stay and enjoy it. The first book was a lot of theory and ideas. This book is more of case studies and examples of things that have gone well. And there was just a couple of things I thought was really interesting in the, in the foreword here. The notion of encouraging municipalities and things like that to, to be enabling of, of these kinds of things. He talks about new leadership in city hall, beginning to embrace the modern role of a community, of a city, as a convener and a catalyst for local innovators and advices for all cities to, to be the host of the party, not the center of it, you know, those kinds of things. And they talk about the ways in which we as municipalities can again create that context to, to bring together these creative ideas to help move the city forward because all these ideas come from the collective wisdom of, of all the participants in it. So, the more we can do to engage and bring that together, the better it will be. And it was Benjamin Franklin who once said, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I offer that because this week is the fire prevention week itself. And I offer that because this week is the Fire Prevention Week itself. We had our, we kind of led off with that a week or so ago with the terrific event. It's actually, the nation is celebrating it this week, kind of in commemoration of the great Chicago fire in 1871. That's kind of what got all this stuff started. My simple advice on that is, is don't take anything for granted. Check your smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, make sure you know how to operate your fire extinguishers, if you have them. Not all fire extinguishers are the same. You use different kinds of fire extinguishers for different kinds of fires. It's serious business, and as we get into the winter months here, and we look to go into the heating season, you know, fires are particularly risky business for us here, so please be careful. Take that ounce of prevention and help make a difference for yourselves and for your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
This weekend, starting on Friday, let me just check the hours, the Friends of the Berkeley Library are hosting their fall book sale, and that will start on Friday, October 10th, from four to seven, Saturday, the 11th, from 10 to five, and Sunday, the 12th, from 12 to four. And also, there's a couple of programs coming up for adults at the Berkeley Public Library. The Swing Tones, which is a program about songs from the Great American Songbook, and that is on Saturday, October 18th, at 2:00 PM. And The Gluten-Free World Beyond Wheat with Lisa Howard, The Cultured Cook, and that is Monday, October 20th. And Community Resources for Seniors on Wednesday, October 29th, at 2:30. So, that's all tonight's. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
A couple of things, Your Honor, thank you. I too would like to thank all the volunteers that assisted in the fire open house. Unfortunately, I was out of town and missed it, but from what I hear, it was very good, and we had a lot of volunteers help out, and we greatly appreciate that. Following on your comments, if anybody has questions about fire prevention, they're always welcome to come to the fire station. We have people there that can answer questions, we can have people there that can help them out, and make sure that they understand how to use their fire extinguishers and that sort of thing. So we'd be glad to do that. Also with the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce has put out one map that was a directory of the city. They passed out all the copies of that, they're going to reprint that and hope to have another 3,000 copies floating around before the holidays, so that visitors to our city and residents to our city know where all the businesses are located. Another important thing that the Chamber is involved in is the state of the city, and I'm sure the mayor will talk more about that in his portion of it. And the third thing they're doing is, in conjunction with the Rotary Club, there is How to Engage Someone in 15 Seconds. It's for the local businesses. It's at Cocoa Fairfields on October 13th, from 5:30 to 7:00, and it's going to be a little seminar on how to interact with people. There's a $10 charge for it, but it should be very good, from what I've heard about it. So let everybody know that might be interested. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Sessa?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a few items. I too would like to express my appreciation to the Public Safety Department for the open house. That was a lot of fun. I especially want to thank the Public Safety spouses. They did the chili. I don't know who won, but certainly that was much appreciated, especially it was kind of a perfect day for chili. So thank you, thank you all for doing that. Also, I know, again, I cannot thank the Drain Commissioner for coming to our council meeting enough for his work. I mean, that was a tremendous report that Mr. Negro put before us, and that was excellent. So, we're going to be, we're going to be getting it together, and we'll make sure that we have it out there for the public, so that they can, they can take a look at this. We do ask all our residents that they have any questions regarding FEMA, to please go to our website. The phone number, in case you want to know, for FEMA, it's 1-800-621-3362. But again, I ask everybody to please go to our website at BerkeleyMish.org for some specific details. And obviously, you can still call my office, and we'll be happy to provide you with any information. And then lastly, you know, I, we still have a lot of, even though we have a lot of volunteers, there's still a lot of positions out there that we need to fill. So I ask our residents that if you have any interest in joining, I know that we have some vacancies in our Zoning Board of Appeal, in our DDA, and in some of the other committees, please send us your application. This is very important, and certainly we appreciate your volunteerism. If there are any questions, I ask everyone to just please contact my office. These applications can be downloaded on our website, and again, our website is www.berkleymish.org, or you can call my office at 248-658-3350. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Suboda?
Thank you, Your Honor. Nothing this evening?
Very good. Mr. Turney?
Well, I was going to recap the Tigers' victory yesterday and today, but I guess that's not going to happen, so nothing this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Well, we've had a lengthy discussion here on the flood event and all the related issues, and certainly we appreciate the presence of Jim Nash and his staff here, and our county We have the State of the City coming up on Friday at Farina's. That will be a luncheon event, when we have the opportunity to describe the achievements, challenges, and opportunities that we have dealt with through the year, and look forward to the next one. So, we'll have plenty to say on that occasion, so let's say a lot less this time, because we need to move on. We have a closed session coming up. The city manager has requested that her evaluation be handled in closed session.